Your microphone's off.
It is six thirty. We will call the October fifth Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Roll call. Brooks. Mike.
Here.
Brian. Thomas.
Here.
Melissa.
Here.
Rob.
Here.
We have a quorum by the skin of our teeth. As a reminder, we do need all four votes to pass the motion tonight. Am I correct, Patrick?
Correct.
Okey dokey. Item number three. Yeah, we can get to there. Item number three, I look to a motion to approve the agenda. Motion a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, consent calendar. Plaid of callous addition lot one and two, and plaid of skybergs addition tract three. Motion in a second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, the approval of minutes of the September seventh, twenty twenty-three regular meeting. Motion in a second to approve. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six is public comments. Anyone wishing to address the commission may do so now. If you are on the agenda, we will get to you.
So, not a really a public comment, but a general thing for the board. There is the Oak and Vine Dinner on October twenty-seventh. The city is reserving space. The guest of honor is Chuck, so you all worked with him pretty closely. If you would like to go, let me know. And I mean, it doesn't cost you anything. We just need to know who wants to go and you can go and celebrate Chuck. October twenty-seventh. That is a, let's find out what day that is. That is a Friday.
A Friday. And some long-haired bearded freak is introducing him. That'd be me.
So, if you are interested in going, let me know and we can get you a space.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? No? Alright. Item number seven, conditional use application for Brandon Wellness. I do believe that they've asked to table this.
Correct. This was originally scheduled a meeting or two ago to be postponed until after the September twentieth park board meeting. Brandon Wellness has requested that we table it again.
Okay, so, let me ask, there is an official thing besides tabling. What do we do? Continuing? Continuation?
A continuance and then you set a date.
A continuation until the next meeting, or do they not know when they want to come back?
Uh, I don't want to speak for them, but I think they have some stuff to get together, so it might be a meeting, might be two, might be longer. I don't know.
Keep continuing it? Okay. I would entertain a motion for continuation till our next meeting? Can we continue it till we hear from them? Or do we have to set a date?
I think you actually have to set a date.
Oh, well, we'll go next meeting then. Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Are you loaded? Very good. Alright. Item number eight, home occupation permit application for twenty-nine oh-five East Sunrise. Let's see here. Ni- Nicholas? Nicholas? Are you here? Come on up. Hey, you typed this. Nice work. I don't see that very often. I can actually read this one. How about that? You would like to operate a bicycle repair business. Anything else you'd like to say to us? Actually, if you could just turn that microphone on right there with that button and give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Nicholas Peterson, twenty-nine oh-five East Sunrise Court in Brandon.
Okay. Sorry. Yeah, you just push it and the red light will come on?
Oh, okay, my bad.
There we go.
Yeah. So, in any case, a home occupation permit application to do bicycle repair out of my garage space. You know, kind of like on a part-time appointment basis, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know what questions and concerns you may have, but, you know, I tend to operate as unobtrusively and quietly as possible, if allowed.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I don't know that I have any other comments beyond that, so.
Does anybody up here have any concerns, questions? Anybody else have anything to say about this? No? One of our missing commission members has asked, are you planning on selling parts over the counter or only for the work that you're doing?
Only for the work being performed.
Okay.
Storage of parts that you're gonna use, if you ever know what all you're gonna...
Sure.
You have to carry a lot of parts.
Uh, common incidentals such, you know, cables, tires, and tubes. Like, you know, I intend to carry like a minimal stock of common items. Anything else would be ordered in on an as-needed basis.
How big a garage do you have?
I have a three-stall garage.
Three?
Yeah.
And you're gonna use one or two stalls of that?
I'd say effectively one, just the work would be done in the back far wall of the garage itself, where I work on my own stuff as it is currently, but...
I would think the only thing that we would ask is that if you do store anything, that it's not done outside or on your driveway or in your yard.
Understood.
Yeah. I do recall that we passed one of these a year or so ago for an auto mechanic in his garage, and that was the request we made of him as there was no outdoor storage.
Correct.
If I remember correctly. Anybody else have anything? Any questions?
I'm sorry? Yeah, any, you know, common bike that you might happen to see, you know, probably save for e-bikes, because that's a whole other can of worms in most cases. Yeah. Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Go ahead, Mike.
Just curious, a little more from our side. Is there a point when we would allow a small business to operate out of garage and then we could set a condition where if they got too busy for some, I don't know how we would even regulate that, but where we would require them to get a
Bigger spot?
Bigger spot, a commercial spot or...
We have rules in place, I believe, for things like parking requirements, right?
There are minimum requirements for home occupations. If they exceed them, then they would not meet the definition of home occupation.
Right. Does that make sense? Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
And what were your hours of?
You know, I outlined on my application, you know, generally speaking, anytime after five, between five and eight, Monday through Friday, you know, and kind of like on an appointment basis on weekends. You know, I do work full-time in another occupation, so this is, you know, very much a part-time endeavor. Yeah, that's, you know, that's as best I can, as I can define it, I guess, at the present time, so.
I would like to thank you for doing it the correct way, because most people would have just started doing this without asking, so I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
If there's not any other questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion in a second to approve. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There you go. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number nine. I also appreciate that you're staying. Nice work.
If you have other things to do, you don't need to stay.
But I do appreciate it.
But I mean, this is awfully riveting and exciting, I'm sure. I don't believe so, but if you want to give our office a call in the morning, Paul's out, but if you talk to Melissa in the morning, she'll be able to confirm that you're good to go.
State would like to see you grab a sales tax license? Yeah. But from our standpoint, I think you're good to go. Thank you. Item number nine, a rezone application for twenty-five hundred and twenty-five fourteen East Augusta Street.
So, to give some background...
Douglas Street Investments. Come on up.
So, to give some background, this is a rezone from R-two to a planned development. These often don't come before you all, because planned development is not a zoning district. It is a uniquely crafted thing. So, the reason why this is in front of you, to approve a minor plat in the subdivision ordinance, a minor plat, is not something that is a new plat or substantially changes. It's just, it's already been platted, so to draw new lines. To approve a replat, staff needs to be able to determine that there is no conflict within the zoning ordinance. And in this situation, based on the layout of the property, the buildings are non-conforming. So, I'll pull all that up. It's one-man show over here, but so...
You're doing great, Patrick.
The lots meet the minimum size and the frontage requirements, but the building placement is what makes it non-conforming. So, a PD is requested because R-two, they're non-conforming. A PD allows you to write a district around the way it looks, so it would take them to a conforming use. We can do the replat, and then they could go through with their plans, whatever they are for the future of the lot, once they're subdivided. So, that's why we are here.
Okay, if you could just state your name and address for the record and then let us know what you would like to do.
Thank you. My name is Eric Kirkfleet. My address is seven-three-one-seven East Twin Pines Court in Sioux Falls. And I am one of the members, owners of Douglas Street Investments, which purchased this property in January of twenty-twenty-three. There are eight units between twenty-five hundred and twenty-five fourteen East Augusta Place that we are looking to parcel off and sell as individual units of workforce housing over the next two to three years. In order to do that, as Patrick indicated, we're seeking a rezoning to allow a planned development district. We worked with our engineer, Aaron Norman, to develop this preliminary plat of the Augusta Townhomes. We also worked with the city staff over the period of several months in addressing any concerns that they had, including extending, there's a private drive mutual access easement in the middle of the property that we worked with. One of Tammy's concerns was making sure that that mutual access easement extended all the way to the northern end of the property line to allow for future potential access to any potential development that's done to the north of the property. And that was to help to limit access off of Chestnut Boulevard. We also worked with Tammy in making sure that the sewer easement and water easements were located correctly, that there was adequate space for a turnaround for a fire truck at the northern end of the property on the private drive. And we also verified for city staff that each unit would have its own water and sewer connections. We believe that this would be a benefit to the city of Brandon to convert what's currently rental housing to owner-occupied housing and help with low inventory that we have here in Brandon for housing. So, we respectfully request that the application be approved. And I'm available for any questions.
Patrick, a question for you. So, there is, we'll call this building one on the left-hand side of the page and building two on the right-hand side of the page.
Yep.
Does building one meet the setback requirements for a corner lot? Because that, or would that be a triple frontage? The access easement on that, on the middle...
As it sits. Yes.
That one meets the...
Because the front, there's the front yard that's East Augusta and the front yard on South Chestnut. When you replat them, though, you, you turn a driveway into a mutual access easement, so that throws off another front yard, and it reconfigures setbacks. So, that's where the non-conformity comes from. So, on the replat, the setback off of the mutual access easement is measured from the center of the mutual access easement. And that's something we'll have to clarify in the PD document itself, but
Because would we...
Not being subdivided, now they, correct. The subdivision is what would make them non-conforming because of setbacks.
However, the building two doesn't look like it meets any setback anywhere.
So, I do have the file when they were originally constructed.
Yes.
According to that file, the setback, assuming they were built correctly, is seven feet on the east side of twenty-five oh-eight. That is what the plan shows in there. So, I have not gone out there and measured it, but it, the plan says seven.
Is there...
So, this, the, this would be the frontage, and you would have the rear, and you would have two sides. So, conceptually, the, if it was seven, then yes.
Okay.
So, just going off what the original plan said.
And we would address off the mutual access easement, not off of Augusta?
They would be off East Augusta.
So, would that not be the front yard?
East Augusta is a front yard. If, with the replat, so would the mutual access easement, would be a front yard.
Okay. And there's twenty-five feet there?
At the closest point on the very southeast corner is twelve-point-nine feet.
So, it's not twenty-five?
Correct.
Or twenty?
So, I'm not sure what the background is when that was approved. And this was approved twenty or thirty years ago.
Not twenty or thirty.
Maybe my time's off. It was approved back in two thousand nine, so.
Two thousand and nine.
Twelve thirteen.
There we go.
So, they're younger than I thought.
There we go. Okay, anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, so these are all under one roof on each side?
Correct.
They're, they're basically fourplexes now, if I remember correctly.
That's right.
Yes.
I go by there every day. I know this property real well. What kind of problems do you see in trying to sell each one separately?
We're not envisioning too many major problems in selling them each individually. I think there's...
Well, the renters are gonna have to vacate or buy.
Sure.
You force them to do.
Sure, yes, so...
And when is that gonna happen, if we approve?
Yeah, so over the next two to three years is our anticipated timeframe. Some of the leases are year-long leases. A lot of them have been converted to month-to-month leases to allow us maximum flexibility in working with the tenants on them being able to find something different, to allow them to move out and to allow those properties to be vacant and ready to sell. We have talked with each tenant to see if they might be interested in potentially buying if, if this would be approved. So, we're trying to work on minimum intrusion or minimum detriment to the tenants, I guess.
Yeah, I know they did that further down the street upon Sun something, I think it was. Off of that one block off of Aspen. They took all those homes that were duplexes and decided they were gonna sell them as individual homes. And the people had to leave or else buy at whatever price they dictated. I guess if you can find a buyer at whatever price you're selling it at, it's okay, I guess.
Yeah, we're looking to sell them in the two-fifty to three-fifty range, kind of depending on timing, depending on market. I think there's a need for that level of housing in Brandon. And most, I also co-own Alpine Property Management. We manage seven hundred units, so we'll work with the tenants. We're not unfamiliar with this and working with the tenants to try to allow them to find something different before we go and sell these properties, so.
Patrick, so for both of these buildings, would you consider, are they both non-conforming? Is one of them non-conforming as it sits? Or is just the, the rezone would make them non-conforming?
So, that's where Mr. Reed and I talked about it today. That becomes complicated as they currently sit East Augusta on twenty-five oh-eight. East Augusta's the front. The rear is behind that, and then you have two sides. So, conceptually, when the plan was approved, the city made the determination it met code. Whether now it would not, the rear looks a little close for being a rear yard. And the side, I have not measured whether it's seven or not, but with the, with the... And looking at the other lot, you would have kind of the same situation. If you measure from the front yard setback, we've tried to design the ordinance to keep it as it sits, the front yard on the access easement being measured from there. I'm trying to find it in our gigantic packet.
Sure.
So, conceptually, right now, the buildings, except for those things, on the right, it is too close to the front yard. It's the twelve-point-nine feet.
Yep.
The, it, from Augusta, the, the left lot, lot number one is twenty-five, so that probably works. It's over twenty on the second front yard.
Yep.
Off of South Chestnut. The rear yard is whichever one, since it's a corner lot, you want that to be, probably in this case, it would be to the north, and then the side yard's seven. So, that's conceptually now in compliance. It's the other one that's not, but to replat it...
So, you would say that what they have here is lot two, three, and four are more than likely twenty-five feet off of South Chestnut, but maybe not the twenty or twenty-five feet of the access easement?
I believe that's correct. I'm trying to find it in the packet.
We, we have...
We measured it out, so off the access easement, so if you go on the chart on page sixty, access easement, the abbrev, the, there in the front yard setback is AE. So, those look like they are, most of them are thirty-twos, so.
Thirty, so thirty CB? What's CB then?
Chestnut, Chestnut Boulevard. And Augusta Street is the AS.
So, it looks like that building theoretically would meet our setbacks, because we do have a... We do have, we did allow for units to be sold with a, with a zero...
Correct, but that's, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other building, however, not so much. In fact, I think if somebody brought that building to us today, we would not allow that. If this was empty land, that building would not be allowed to be built. Is that correct?
Correct. It would not meet the setback on the, the north or, and the east is questionable, because it's hard to know the measurement. But definitely not the north and definitely not off of...
Well, if you're treating it like building one, it would have to at least be twenty or twenty-five feet on both sides, and it's certainly not that.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, that's why the ordinance, to, to make it a conforming thing so it can be replatted.
Okay.
Is why it's presented this way.
What challenges does a PD have versus...
Challenges? What do you mean challenges?
Well, if, the, the buildings are what they are, we're not gonna move them. If solving the problem for them to be able to replat with a PD versus a non-conforming in an R-two...
So, you, when you have a non-conforming use, you cannot make improvements to a non-conforming use. Is that correct?
Non-conforming uses can sit as they are.
As sit as they are.
Should something come and destroy it, that would be, it would have to be built back into compliance. Or if it's discontinued for a period of time, usually over a year, has to be brought into compliance.
And even like decks and things like we've discussed before can be a challenge.
With PD, does that solve any of those issues?
Well, when we have passed PDs in the past, we have certainly still held them to setback requirements. We do typically allow for the mutual access easement to maybe be a little lessened, but typically, we like to try to keep the setbacks, even in a PD.
So, this PD was written to, the big thing about this PD is the setbacks.
Yeah.
The setbacks in this one are written that way to keep the buildings exactly as they are, but those setbacks are less than what would be required in R-two, in most, in some cases. There is a side yard on lot five that is seven, and that's the, the north lot. It's seven instead of, if it were a side yard, it would be, usually ten is our requirement.
I, I will say, I struggle with this a little bit, because I know that if this was raw land and this plan was brought to us, we wouldn't allow it. Also, I'll read it since he's not here, but Mr. High...
Since he's not here, consider this as public comment rather than somebody on the board.
Oh. Somebody disagrees with this.
So, I would strongly oppose it.
Yeah. There we go. That's public comment. There we go. It's mostly that east building, like, I, I think the west building... Now, I, I don't know, Patrick. If, if the west building was, was replatted, would it, would it be able to be sold off as individual units? Like, it meets the setback requirements of an R-two, correct?
Generally, pro, most likely, yes. The issue there would be, how would we treat the access to it? Would we then have to consider that a private road with its own setback that'd be measured off of the inside of the sidewalk, which would be a problem?
I thought we measured to the middle of the...
Usually, for private streets, it is measured from the, the sidewalk easement. So, that's why this one has the unique language of measuring from the center of the mutual access easement. I believe that's the case. I'm...
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Mike, Rob, anybody? Seem to have talked a lot.
You mentioned that you were gonna provide for fire trucks to make a turnaround in there? Where was that gonna be at?
On the north end of the property. Our engineer worked with the Brandon Fire Department to confirm that they would, there would be enough space for a turnaround on the north end of the property.
Does this already, this already exists, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I mean, it's already there.
Correct.
So, I mean, this would have already met fire codes when it was built, back whenever it was. It just struggles a little bit ma, meeting the setback requirements.
So, for your reference, in the R-two, if a lot contains or butts a private street mutual access easement, the front yard setback shall be fifteen feet measured from the edge of the sidewalk easement closest to the structure. So, if there was a sidewalk easement there, the building, even twenty-five hundred, building one, might not meet this setback distance.
Because it's, it's all cement between the two buildings, isn't it? I mean, there really isn't even a, I mean, officially, a sidewalk set there.
And by calling it a driveway rather than a private street, kind of the thought there was, it doesn't make sense for them to build a sidewalk going all the way up through. So, that would eliminate that, and that's why it's measured from the center of the drive, essentially, rather than from the edge of the sidewalk easement. That would be fairly close to the wall of the structure.
Okay. Does anybody else here have anything to say about this?
On the east one, whether they keep it as a rental or a single family, the front setback is what it is. I, I guess I'm still... I, I guess I'm still if they, uh, under its current use, they, because it was built, I don't know, if, if it, it's non-conforming, is it considered non-conforming?
Currently, it is not con- Currently, it is not conforming. It would have, to be conforming, it would have to meet the requirements of our current zoning ordinance regardless of when it was built, and it does not meet the front or the rear. Possibly the side, depending on how we measured it, but definitely not the front or the rear.
So a lender may not lend on it because it's non-conforming. It may go through, it may not, depending on if they catch it. So I don't know, it, I, I'm a little bit hung up on it is what it is, and whether they keep it as a rental unit or sell it as a separate unit, that doesn't change anything to this building. The side setback, it goes up to R two. It doesn't, again, it doesn't change anything from what it currently is, but if something were to happen where it was destroyed.
The PD would allow it to be rebuilt, whereas R two, as it sits, it could not be rebuilt as it sits.
And then the rear setback is obviously too close, I, I don't know, I know that we wouldn't allow it if it was blank ground, bare ground, but that's not what it is, I don't know.
There's also the, the tricky situation, right, of, of allowing it, allowing a non-conforming use to be replatted or rezoned as, or reclassified as a PD, and then seeing that come in again, because it will. Yes, it will, and the, the, the modern PDs that we have allowed, we, we would not allow this. If it was, if it was new dirt, so. I'm not a hundred percent sure why that building was allowed to be built when it was, I'm not here to it is, I mean, it's built, it's there, it's standing. I don't know. Anybody else have any questions? Anybody else have any thoughts on this? No, no, still no? Aren't you glad you came to a P and Z meeting? Isn't it fun? A lot of weird terms, sorry. If nobody has any other questions, I would entertain a motion to either approve the rezone or to deny the rezone.
So since this is a rezone and a text amendment, is a recommendation to the city council to either approve or not to approve. Either way, it goes to the city council.
I, I do agree that we don't want to make PDs an out for non-conforming uses. And that, that east building doesn't fit any setback. So I'm, I'm hesitant, I guess, I, I can see that everyone that has a non-conforming use wanting to rush over and get a PD. And that's not good. The east one or the west one, I don't see that as being nearly the issue if, if there was something minor there, but again, we don't want to establish a out for non-conforming uses.
Okay.
That's not a motion.
It's not a motion, that's what I was waiting for. Somebody has to make a motion, or I'm going to have to go get coffee.
Second.
A motion and a second to deny the rezone, or actually to make a recommendation to the city council to deny the rezone, is that correct, Patrick?
Correct.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion is denied. You will be heard in front of the city council in?
October sixteenth.
On October sixteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, we do this fun thing where we do we fa- do we adjourn?
Ah.
No.
I believe you just.
I will.
Yeah, you reconvene.
There we go. Okay, so I will at this time call the order, the Board of Adjustments. This is where things get fun. All right, so roll call, you're all still here. Item number twelve, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda of the Board of Adjustments. Motion to check in, to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries, item thirteen, a variance application for fifteen twenty East Liberty Circle. Sixty-three, Cody Swenson, come on up.
So this is a variance request seeking a second driveway, the existing driveway is off of East Liberty Circle, the applicant is requesting a driveway off of Eatbert Street. Currently, our zoning ordinance requires a residential driveway to have one driveway up to, I believe it's forty feet in width, this is requesting a second one. The method to do that, since we are currently working on an ordinance, but it is not in effect, so there's, the only way to vary from the language of the code is a variance.
Okay. Cody?
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Cody Swenson, uh, yeah, I'm looking to build a second driveway right off the side street there. I can't attach it to my, from the northwest corner of my property, I can't attach it to my current driveway, because that would require cutting through the front yard. And going to the east of my house, I have a fire hydrant and some utility boxes that would not allow me to make the wide way, driveway any wider. And the purpose, or not the purpose, but, uh, one of the things about having the dri- our garage where it is on the northwest corner there, I have that big commercial area that's going up behind, it'll be kind of a privacy barrier between my property and then the commercial property, and, yeah.
So you have that pulled up, Patrick, that's six, the block six is the property we're talking about?
Yep, and on here is the site plan.
Yep. So is the garage currently built?
It is not.
Okay. So this is something we're working on, changing the ordinance to, would it allow for this, Patrick, when we change the ordinance?
It would potentially, but the driveway would be arguably the, a little too large, I think the number you said on was twenty-four. And so in his email, Mr. Hybrink mentioned that we do have a section in our zoning code fifteen dash fifteen dash two B ten. And I will read that off to, access to a private garage shall consist of a minimum of eight feet of unoccupied property beyond the required yards. Speaking with staff, this, that section seemed to come as a surprise, and staff has never applied that in the past to, to other garages. So it, it is in the book, it has not been applied before, so do with it what you will.
Oh wait.
Can you read that again, what did that?
So that section says, access to a private garage shall consist of a minimum of eight feet of unoccupied property beyond the required yard. So in addition to the required setback, this seemingly requires eight feet of unoccupied space.
So that's saying if the required set-
Before the garage.
If the required setback is twenty-five, it would have to be.
This seems to require twenty-five plus eight.
So that'd be thirty-three.
Correct, staff has, for some reason, never applied this in, in the past to other projects with garages.
It looks like that is met, though, at thirty-four feet.
The garage on there is twenty feet, it's at the setback for a second front yard.
So it'd have to be moved eight feet back from that.
If you were to apply that section, arguably, yes.
Oh, see, that's not how I would understand that section, I would understand it coming off of the back of the house, it needs to be eight feet plus the unoccupied setback, so that'd be twenty-five feet plus eight would be thirty-three.
There are many differing opinions on what that means.
That's a great, that's great.
That tells me that is an issue that maybe we should talk about.
We should probably revisit that, let's, let's do that next meeting, maybe, because that seems.
That's on, that's the plan.
Confusing.
My hesitation on discussing this is that we're currently already discussing
Yeah.
the driveway, and I, I would recommend that we continue that and see where that gets us, rather than doing a variance quick for one property.
Okay.
That'd be my recommendation.
Thoughts? Anybody else?
If we say no, then he has to wait six months or something?
No.
To reapply as, if it was a variance.
To reapply for a variance. If we changed the zoning code or the, the ordinance, then he would be allowed to do this without a variance. Correct.
The language we were discussing would allow a second twenty-four foot
Right.
wide on a corner lot by conditional use permit.
Correct, so he, maybe the twenty-six wouldn't exist, but take two feet off of it and would.
And that's measured at the curb line, I think.
Correct.
At the property line, so then you could fan out if you wanted to.
Correct.
Um, I mean, at this point, I could wait, I think it's getting a little cold to pour concrete right now anyway, so it might have to wait till spring anyway. Yep, yep.
I would like to see you be able to do that.
Yep.
You know, we're close to changing.
Yep, yep.
Go ahead, Alyssa.
I was wondering about the size of the, the total square feet, if you built this garage, the total square feet of this garage and the garage you already have, compared to the total square feet of your house.
So the.
Because your storage areas can't be more than the house.
Yep, yep, so the upstairs of the, or the footage of the house, uh, the livable area of the house is, I believe, twelve thousand, or not twelve thousand, twelve hundred.
It's a big house, man.
And, yes, yep, and the garage stays below that thousand mark, I, I believe it's nine hundred and ninety.
The two garages added together, you mean?
We, we do allow an accessory structure of what, a thousand square feet?
You do.
Yes. Correct. So the accessory structure would meet our requirements, it meets the setbacks. It's sixteen feet off the back property line, those are rather deep lots. So this would accommodate something like that. So the, the garage size isn't an issue with the second driveway, it seems to be, so, but that is something that we sort of recognize that we should look at, so we're addressing it currently. But what we have in front of us is a variance hearing to allow something that we don't currently allow, so. Any thoughts on that, or I would entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we continue this.
No, you would either need to approve or deny the variance.
You can, you could technically continue.
Well, you could, but to win.
But if, if we finish changing the ordinance so that you wouldn't need the variance.
It becomes irrelevant.
Yeah.
Well, at that point, you would still need to come to a conclusion on it.
Right.
The impact would be minimal.
We would have to, you know, approve a variance for something that doesn't need to be approved, or deny one that doesn't, I mean, right, so, yes. But I do believe that, yes, you can theoretically continue it, but I think that we probably should take action on it. Because continuing it would just come to the next meeting, or the next meeting, or the next meeting. Correct.
Where are we standing on that at the? So we have worked out the text, what I'm waiting on is, the engineer and I need to discuss road classifications. And that is a discussion we really need to have, because the applicant that lived out in the bluffs is also waiting on that. And it would be nice to have that in place by spring, so people can get going.
Could the applicant withdraw, so that if, for whatever reason, they wanted to reapply, they wouldn't have to wait six months?
They can, since it has been noticed and you all are hearing it, there would not be a refund of a fee, but they could withdraw if they think doing so would have a benefit of not getting a no on the variance that would delay six months.
That's really easy to understand, isn't it?
Yes.
We dove into Robert's Rules of Orders, I apologize, but.
My question would be if I waited to, for that ordinance, ordinance to pass.
Yes.
Would I, with that eight-foot ordinance at the back, would I have to do a variance for that, then?
No.
No?
I don't think so.
It would come down to how we interpret that, if we end up talking about it and getting rid of it, then no, but if it's still there, we would have to come up with an interpretation of it.
That'd be a great discussion to have, because it doesn't make any sense to me. No, okay, so, well, right, so. That being said, I would entertain a motion. Or do you want to withdraw? So some people just don't like to be told no, so they withdraw their request.
Gotcha, um, we could go for a vote.
Okay.
And if, if it does help, I would, I have thought about it, I would conform to that twenty-four feet, if that
That's what I was going to say.
If that helps, I, I have thought about it, I would make it smaller to conform to the proposed twenty-four feet.
If we vote on it, if we vote on it, say we vote no. And if he ends up wanting a variance for any part of it later, he would have to wait at least six months, correct?
Correct, so it would come down, the decision we made today, so you add six months to today's date, and that's the day he could reapply.
Yep. All right.
I move to deny the request.
And you can also, if you disagree with their decision, you can appeal to the city council, I'd need a, a notice within five days of today.
So we have a motion to deny the variance, is there a second? We have a motion and a second to deny the variance. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Is that all of you?
Just for the record clarification, could I get who made the motion and who seconded?
Mike made the motion, Alyssa seconded, and I think I heard four ayes. I must be deaf in this ear, because I couldn't hear over here. There we go. I could be deaf, I don't know. So there you go, is that, do you need any clarification as to what just happened?
Maybe.
We denied your variance application.
Yep, yep.
With the understanding that this is something that we're working through on our current ordinances to allow for, so just, if you'd like to come to every P and Z meeting, we, we welcome guests, you can be here when we have discussions about it, if you'd like to contribute. Otherwise, just watch for when we change the ordinance.
All right, perfect.
Variances are very touchy when you vote, like, when you, if you vote, yes, it opens up a big gate to a lot of people and everything, so that's why it's very.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
All righty.
And we're already
And we're working on it.
Working on it, so
Yep.
Rather than do it quick for one person, we want to make sure we have a good policy that works for the city, so that's what we're, we're working on, and so.
Yep, yep.
There you go.
Perfect, that sounds good, thank you guys.
Thank you. Alright, with that I would entertain a motion to adjourn the board of adjustments. Motion a second to adjourn the board of adjustments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jeez, nobody. Okay. I will now reconvene the planning and zoning meeting. These are fun. Item number fourteen, Risti Land Development Concept Plans on page eighty-three. I would guess there's somebody here to speak on this. Hello, sir.
Good evening. Brian Jackson with Van Busker Companies. This is the concept plan that we are submitting for your information regarding, well, obviously we call, calling it the Risti property at this point in time, a to-be-determined development that will be west of the Big Sioux River and east of the Bluffs and Eagle Creek subdivisions there. Uh, what we're looking to do is basically transition from the Holly Boulevard area with some general business and some, um, um, R-three multi-family residential, do a center section with the R-two zoning and then surrounded on the outsides by R-one. So possibly looking for some, also as we work our way through this, maybe some mixed use i- in, in the general business area. So, um, we'll work towards that as we prepare the preliminary plan and get that submitted and then annex it into the city.
So remind me Patrick, do we actually have a mixed-use zone?
Um, not named as such, but you can have residential above businesses in general business, neighborhood business.
Okay.
Central business. So we do allow you to have to live in commercial spaces.
But only, but we only allow for like one residence above a building. We don't allow for multiple residents above a building?
I, I don't think you're limited. Neighborhood business you might be to the owner, but
When it comes to general business, we don't?
General business is.
Cause I thought that we didn't ever actually finish writing a mixed-use. Which we should have one.
So a conditional use in general business, which you can have one or more of the following principal uses is dwellings.
Okay.
But they shall be above the first floor. Cause so conceptually you could have multiple dwellings above the first floor.
So we do have language for that.
Down the property to the west of this, what did we approve that I thought for that?
On the corners into that apartment complex.
Yeah. To do that.
Yeah, I think so. Okay.
So any questions?
Are there any areas set aside for parks in there?
No.
So the reason behind that is, I mean, it's up to them if they just wanted to do it. But, so there is currently Van Buskirk Park out in the Bluffs and there is the state recreational area directly to the east. That development, our general standard is we like some kind of park within a half mile of every property in town. And this meets that requirement. Um, that's not saying they don't have our standard park fees, but.
Yes. Is that black and green line, is that a trail?
That is your sewer line.
That's the sewer line. Did we talk about doing a trail system through here?
Yes.
At some point, where, where would that end up going?
Um, ideally, I guess as we've had discussions with Patrick and Tammy, is it would continue on from over by the Bluffs where it comes out from the park and continue on along the creek as it goes along there. Going to the north and then going underneath the bridge and connecting with the basically the maintenance bench or the sewer line easement that you have going north and then back to the west by the railroad tracks.
So would it be a similar path to what the sewer line is?
Not a hundred percent sure on what the details would be. We'd work with Patrick and Tammy on that.
Okay.
There's that dog training area right there.
Yep.
And there's trails that go quite a ways back in there already.
What it would do is help with the connectivity between the Bluffs and like, let's say the rest of Brandon. If they could get a trail system that would sort of exit closer to the rest of the city instead of having to ride down Holly Boulevard, if you will. Are you gonna build a, uh, R-three that's also in the shape of a question mark?
Maybe. No, just kidding. Uh, you know, to be determined. Um, we're still, we're just in conversations, but yeah, there's it'd be nice to be some, some contemporary structures out there would be great, but.
You know, the people who built that didn't even realize that they built a question mark when they built that building.
Really? Yeah.
Until it was pointed out to them.
Yeah.
It's the R-three residential high density.
The one just to the west and Eagle Creek.
Eagle Creek.
Yeah, if you look at it.
It's got, there's a label over the top of it.
Yeah, see?
Do we require anything on the, along the, along Rice there as far as pedestrian sidewalks or anything like that?
Um, but, so we're currently doing a corridor study with that road and a lot of questions will be answered there. I mean, currently it's not built to city standards. If I remember correctly, it's ditches and it's but we're doing a joint study is it with the, the county of the city, Brandon, the city of Sioux Falls?
Yep, so
On that.
The study is Rice, Holly, all the way from Sioux Falls down to Split Rock. So that is something we are looking at just because as you go you go from Si- Sioux Falls to the county to Brandon to the county to Brandon again. So there's a lot of different ownership all over the road. So coming up with a plan.
Yes. So currently I don't believe there's sidewalks along Rice, Holly.
There is not in that stretch. There is a, a shoulder.
Yep.
At best a shoulder.
Right. So I, I don't know what the requirements would be until that corridor study is done.
Is there enough setback there that they could put those in later? That we could require that? I guess my concern is this is gonna, this is gonna tie in a big chunk of Maine-Brandon out to the Bluffs and if we want to connect those, we should have a way that pedestrian and bikes can get there.
I, I would say that they look to be lined up with the property to the west. And I, I think what the corridor study is probably gonna show is that they would want that, a, a two-lane road with a turning lane, I would assume. I don't think it's gonna end up being four. Do you know? Like?
Nope, no idea. We're waiting to see that also. Yeah.
So I mean, I would assume it's gonna be built that way and there would be enough room there to build that road, I would assume. And then there would, I would guess sidewalks would be on either side of it. Which would certainly help to connect that part to the, the rest of Brandon. We still have some problem with the river, but.
Are you able to set aside some access point to the park on the south side of that? Is there any thing set aside right now so that?
They, they, we've met the game fishing parks and they have no desire to open up anything. There's one that's coming off of the Bluffs underneath the power lines and that's the only one, but they have the game fishing parks would determine that as far as access goes. And the information we've received from them is that they're happy with what the, what they have right now as far as access go, points go.
Where does their access currently run?
Right underneath the power lines on the Bluffs. Yep, right there.
So on this map?
Where is that long line? Kinda, it's right where the
Yeah, right where your cursor's at.
So it's.
It's big enough to get like a bicycle through.
Okay.
Yeah. So eventually, so that, that track that where Patrick was just running, eventually the city will take that over and make that a path that will be an access point to the Bluffs, or excuse me, to the Big Sioux Rec area.
Okay.
Do you think there would ever be development south of this? One we're, like down here? No.
No, that's, that's a state park, yep.
That's a state park.
And over, okay.
Yeah, but this is it for right there because the state owns the ground on both sides.
Yeah, yeah. And then the rivers to the others, to the east of it. I just, you know, like on this southwest corner here, I see two cul-de-sacs butting up against each other. And I hate to see cul-de-sacs anywhere, ever.
I know.
But just, you know, to see them butting up to each other.
I will say that at least these cul-de-sac lots are squares, rectangles. They're not weird, tight shaped things.
I, and, and part of this too, and, and I'll, I'll tell you, there's gonna be some design changes as far as some of the streets and stuff go, just for the fact that you know, when, you know, you asked about the park and there's that track five, which is in the yellow and it's a bigger piece of ground. And I had reached out to Tammy earlier, last week maybe even. And I'm like, is this something you guys would want? And it was a quick no. So it's not gonna be needed for drainage. It's not gonna be needed for anything. So we'll, we'll readjust that. At, at the point at time, it was kinda there just in case we needed it for like a detention area, but.
Which, which track was that? I'm sorry.
Sorry, yeah. Patrick's gonna show it up. Right on, yeah, right to the left of the cul-de-sac. So we'll, we'll do some adjusting there. I mean, the, the, the concept itself as far as the housing and the mix to the, and, uh, general business and R-three along Holly is gonna stay the same, but streetwise, there might be some redesign going on, but that'll come through more so in the preliminary plan once we do a little bit more, um, information or research as far as that goes.
What is this right here? Is this wording or?
I think it's just wording off of Google Maps or something.
So we're on, we're only allowing one access off of Holly for this?
There's two.
Where's the other one? Is it just to the west?
Yeah, so we, we, we had originally met and just trying to line up with the two existing approaches on the other side, on the north side of Holly. And that's what we're looking for as far as, you know, when the, the study, corridor study does come out is you know, are there's gonna be the right locations for it? You know, will there be any additional signals or, or, you know, things along that line. But for right now, and, and we're early enough in the stages where you know, they can be adjusted a little bit. We'll, we'll look to do some grading in the spring, just with the dirt. Yeah. We won't be going there anytime soon. Anything we'll be doing will be north of the creek, creek area. Keep it simple for a while.
Yes, I, I don't know what that corridor study will say as far as, um, where else to put signals, where else to I mean, there's only one on that road currently. But this would certainly be adding a lot more traffic on that road. I would think. Um, it does look like it ties into the Bluffs and Eagle Creek.
Yes.
That's also nice. Uh, anybody else have any questions or concerns about this? Uh-oh, Barb wants, Barb's got something to say. Hi Barb.
Hi. Uh, Barb Fish, fourteen oh one South Park View Place. So Brian, on this map, where is that barn at right now?
Basically right underneath the label there.
The R-one residential low-density box.
So I don't know if you are familiar with that barn that's out there. If you drive out Holly to the west and you look over there, there's a barn with a stone foundation, right Tim? You were out there. Um, and we were trying to come up with some way that we could save that, um, for historical purposes with the Historical Society. No one has come up with, um, a gold bar to cover the cost of that, but that was something that we were exploring. We talked to, I think they talked to Game Fishing Parks. Uh, of course they never have any money. Um, we don't have money, Historical Society, so it's just something that is out there that we would love to preserve. But I wanted you to be aware of it, um, when you're looking at the concept plans.
Yes. The Historical Society was going to start trying to do some research in terms of finding places or people that, they, one of the benefits they did say is that by having it stay there, it opened up some other grant corridors. I don't know if they can still get anything, but so there is a barn. It's on like lot fourteen, thirteen and fourteen right there. And since it's named the Risti Development, that's actually a Risti barn. So that, the Historical Society, because the guy who's running it, his last name is Risti. He is at least interested in trying to figure out how to do something with that. We don't know what though. Who knows?
Yep. Uh, just a comment regarding that is, yeah, we are cognitive of that. We were onsite, met with, with everybody and it was neat. Um, I've actually have gotten, I'll kinda put this out there. It's just in, in daydream thoughts right now, but, um, Myron Van Buskirk, who started the company, has actually approached me and asked some questions about the barn and and, and some seed money to kinda get things going. So if I can, maybe in the next few weeks I'll have some more information, but it's something where he's, he's been part of the community. He started a business here in, in Brandon over fifty years ago and he's been, you know, within the Bluffs and everything. So.
I believe Myron and Gene at one time, a long, long time ago, were partners in Brandon.
I'm sure.
And had a business in something that was called Camby's Furniture Building for a while.
Okay.
I only know that because that's where Sioux Marble started, was right there.
Yeah, I, I'd heard that, yeah. But I knew he had done some trusses and things. Anyway, so I guess for Barb and, and anybody else with Historical Society is it's, it's open, we're open to discussion, but I think it's something that the community is definitely gonna have to get the involved with. Um, whether it be, and, and cooperatively between, you know, if we can reengage or get, I think you had some, did you have an email with the game fishing parks and get a response at all, Patrick, or?
I have not heard back from them recently. I know there are a couple of articles in the works that they're waiting on comments.
Okay, yeah. I, I know that, um, the Brandon Valley Journal had an article and then, um, Sioux Falls Simplified had done an article here. Um, and I visited with somebody from Sioux Metro Growth Alliance on, uh, Wednesday regarding, cause they are the paid sponsor for that and I gave a quote and everything. So it's, it's open for discussion and there's some, there's some brainstorming going on regarding how something that would be incorporated into the neighborhood if we ever got to that point.
Yeah.
So, keep your fingers crossed.
It would be a cool asset, I think, to the neighborhood just to have it. Um, what it would be used for, I don't know. No idea.
Yep.
But are you still trying to find the barn?
No, but I thought, yeah, we're just looking at the other buildings near the barn.
Oh yeah, those are all coming down.
Yeah, they are not in good condition.
The, the, the barn that's right on like number fourteen, it's, it's a rather impressive structure. It's very large. It is what I would say is a South Dakota timber frame. So it's got a lot of nails in it. It's not so big on joinery, a lot of nails.
Yep.
But it is a cool, and, and it's a cool barn. It looks cool. It's, it's kind of a, what's called a bank barn. So it's kinda built into a hillside. Yeah. It's, and it's massive inside of it. But we'll see what's gonna happen with that. We just need to find an angel donor, Barb. Maybe somebody will win the lottery in the next week that lives in Brandon that wants to be a part of a barn.
Yeah.
Oh well.
So it looks like it would take up at least two of your lots or three maybe.
We'll see.
Yeah, like I said, we've got some, it's, it just kinda came about as a, well, what if? And then you start thinking and.
Those, those lots nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen are very, very deep lots.
They're very deep lots and part of that, if, I guess if you would scroll down a page or two on the, uh, plan is right there is fine. Uh, that's the flood zone. So the red line is your flood, floodway, floodway, and then there's a hundred, your flood zone. So what we had done, so we did a concept like this at, at Cherry Lake in Sioux Falls where we have a, you know, it'd be like lot fourteen A and fourteen, or fourteen and fourteen A. For the price you buy both, but you can only build a structure on fourteen because it has to be outside of the flood zone.
Sure.
And, but that way you still own the property. So that's why they're kind of that length. The other thing was trying to tie that in with the road coming in off of Holly. Once again, we might adjust that a little bit as we reanalyze everything. But you've been out there, the views out there are just spectacular.
They are. In fact, track four would be a wonderful place for like some sort of apartment with, with retail below it. It would really be spectacular.
Yeah.
Yes.
Need another gold bar.
Yep.
Angel. For that.
Alright, anybody else have any questions or thoughts about this? Any suggestions? Alright, anybody else have any questions or thoughts about this? Any suggestions? I do believe, once this is ready to go, it would go quick.
Hope so. We've had a lot of interest, um, a lot of interest, so.
How many R two units are there? Or lots? It looks like a lot-
Roughly, I would say there's like a hundred and forty-ish.
Okay. And these are going to be villa-style? These are gonna be twin homes? These are gonna be-
Uh, no twin homes at, for, for the, um, potential buyers that I've visited with, um, any of your, um, attached multifamily is going to be more towards that R three corner. Everything else to the south, as of right now, is going to be, right, probably a mix of some detached villa homes, and then some detached, smaller homes. Um, I have a, I have a builder that has a, a, a home that they can put on a fifty-foot wide lot, so it's gonna work out well with the, uh, R two zoning. So they, they went like fifty-foot wide, sixty-five feet wide, and then they're back up to the eighty, so.
So you'd maybe even see selling these off in sections to that kind of development?
Yeah, possibly, yeah. We're, we're figuring out the details on that also.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, last but not least, building permits. Twelve. We have twelve new homes built in the city of Brandon. There we go. We're flying. We do not. It was just up for discussion. They will present to us a preliminary plan, for us to approve. Uh, that's also something that the staff will look a little closer at, things like where the sewer lines are, and where the drainage is, and all that kinda stuff. So. There's a motion to adjourn. And a second. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye? Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at seven forty.